Are there any question, further questions of Mr. Loken or do you have anything else?
We've gotten over a lot of it, I think. Is there anything that you guys want to know more about? You don't, otherwise I don't. I don't know a whole lot more than that.
I'm good. Good, we discussed this before.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Mac. Hannah?
Is Joe Lewis here?
No, no, no. No.
It was requested of him to either remote or be in person today, so his absence is on the watch.
Does he know that it was moved here?
Yeah, loo- looking back through, I did not see a request for a remote for Joe. Yeah, so, but you have the, you have a copy of the report, which includes two alternative solutions. Alternative one is to regrade the Southern Spoil Bank and establish a Northern Buffer. And alternative two is to regrade the Southern and Northern Spoil Banks. So the alternative one includes a vegetative buffer strip. That's equivalent elevation to the spoil bank prior to the alteration. The difference between these two is that alternative one, the landowner must provide an easement to the Drainage Authority over the new extent of the ditch, including the access and buffer areas, to guarantee access to manage the open channel ditch. Alternative two is identical to alternative one on the Southern Spoil Bank. On the Northern side, the spoil bank will be regraded to estab- reestablish the approximate elevations of the spoil bank prior to alteration. This alternative would not require the acquisition of an easement from the landowner according to the engineering report. There's an opinion of probable costs for both of these included in the report. The alternative one, which is the one that would require the easement to the vegetative buffer strip, estimated cost is eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Alternative two is thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and both include a twenty percent contingency. Those are the options for repair that our engineer has identified.
Commissioners, I would just like to point out that you're not being asked to pick which option you would like today. You're not be, if we move forward and have a hea- a formal hearing, which is what the board's being asked to consider today, we can make sure that the engineer is here to provide the board with the full explanation and the full breakdown. And if the board has any questions at that time, hopefully he'll be here so that we can have that discussion. But I think the important thing is just that the board understand that there is a recommendation and understand that this restoration report, what it, what its general conclusions are as far as responsibility and impact to the ditch.
So Joe will probab- probably be, will be at the December meeting and explain the differences between options one and two? Is that what we're hop- hoping?
If, if we set that public hearing.
We don't have to decide on the options today, we're just gonna set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing.
So if we set a public hearing, then are all of the landowners that benefit from this ditch advised to that public hearing?
That's an option. So if the board would like, I can kind of walk through what our different options are at this time.
That would be good. Do that.
Let's do it.
So first, I would just like to start with findings in order. I do need to amend them a little bit, so the draft that you have in front of you will not be the one signed and formalized, just because it does assume that Mr. Lewis was gonna be here today. But I, we can, I can amend that, just to say that the restoration report states X, Y, Z. And so instead of having saying that the engineer presented the information to the board. So that's kind of the most significant amendment that I have to the draft findings in front of you at this, at this time. But draft findings go through and state kind of what information has been presented to you today. But kind of the key points that I would like the board to kind of walk through and discuss is, does the board find that the drainage system has been altered from its as constructed state without authority from the drainage authority?
You're looking for an answer, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
The consensus is yes.
Yep.
And does the Drainage Authority, can the Drainage Authority name someone as the responsible party at this time? Based on the information presented, and who would that be?
The property owner.
And that would be Mr. Service, Tyler Service?
Yes.
Yep.
And does the board find that there is a need to send the responsible landowner a notice regarding the Drainage Authority's findings here? And have a second public hearing where he's given the opportunity to, to respond to the findings here today and have the engineer present and have the board make a determination as how the ditch should be restored?
Absolutely.
Okay, so with those, the board has three options. The first would be to direct, oh, to set a time and date and location for a public hearing and direct the county staff and Drainage Authority's legal counsel to send notice to Mr. Service inviting him to that hearing. And then kind of the second part of that would be whether or not the board desires to send notice to the other benefited landowners of CD seventeen. There's nothing requiring such notice, but there's also nothing saying not to either. I think from the perspective of if the board goes through and says, you are, Mr. Service, you're responsible for the cost of restoring the ditch. And that then is appealed or otherwise challenged in court. And a judge says Drainage Authority got it wrong, this is a cost that has to be shared by all benefited landowners. The risk is that you're gonna have somebody upset and say, well, I didn't know this was going on. I would have said, we should just pay for it now and avoid the legal costs, or et cetera, et cetera. And so I think the risk of not, I mean, there's an upfront cost to sending notice to everyone, but there's a risk of not sending notice either. And so with that information, what are the board's wishes as far as, well, let me back up for a second, apologies. So that's kind of option one, is approving the findings in order, setting the public hearing, directing public notice to be sent to Mr. Service and/or just the benefited landowners generally. And then the other two options is the board can recess this meeting and direct staff or legal counsel to do further investigation, further findings, come back at this at a later date. And the final option would be if the board finds that there's no credible information that has been presented today and would like to just close the meeting and not do anything further on this issue. With all of that information in front of the board, what are the board's wishes?
So I have a motion here that I would be willing to, if you guys have enough information.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mr. Chair, I move to approve the draft findings in order directing staff and legal counsel to send a notice to Tyler Service, directing Mr. Service to appear before the Drainage Authority at a public hearing on the proposed restoration to be held on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, at one P M. in the county boardroom of the Meeker County Government Center.
Okay, a motion on the table?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second that, any further discussion in terms of that?
I do want to discuss, you know, I don't want it to turn into chaos, but are we wrong for not inviting all the benefited members?
I think I was gonna bring up during the discussion that you would notify all the, all the people on the, does that make sense? I don't know if that has to be in the motion, does it?
That should be in the motion, Commissioner.
That should be in the motion?
Yes.
So add to the motion that Barb will inform all the, what do we want?
Effective property.
Benefited. Benefit, benefited people on the ditch authorities so that they're aware of the public hearing.
I will second that, would that change?
Okay, Corey, got all that?
Got it, yep.
Okay, okay, there's a motion on the table, any further discussion after that? All those in favor, please signify by saying.
I think we need a roll call.
Is it a roll call?
Roll call on that?
That's what it says here.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Am I wrong?
Matter of me.
I thought I read that.
It requires a roll call, but it's.
It doesn't. Let's just do it, let's do a roll.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. With that said, there will be a hearing December seventeenth at one P M. and.
It will be a.
Sounds good.
It will be right here.
Appreciate your time, thank you, Hannah, thanks, Matt. Moving on.
Best with the way I wrote that, push it up.
That was good.
Thing of beauty, it's a thing of beauty, is what it was. All right, with that said, we will go back to property records, taxation, and elections with Barb.
It is.
It was further on.
It's the same.
Same deal.
For you.
Jeez, I know. I was thinking that same exact thing.
And so appreciate it.
All right, Barb, luck, taxation, et cetera, et cetera.
Morning, Barb, continuation.
Sounds like a good.
From the property records, taxation. I was asked to do a review of our, our areas of service to the county. And for those that are unaware, that is now inclusive of the county auditor and the county recorder. So we get asked that every once in a while with that new title. So with that, I'm gonna go through the department responsibilities. We have numerous, so I put them in alphabetical order. So there's do, this is maybe do most or second, and a single day provides another or new challenge to what we're doing. So with that, we'll start with ditch, that's one of the items that we coordinate in our office. And some specific department responsibilities, we maintain the financial records for the county. There are twenty-nine county and sixteen joint systems, each has their own financial accounting. We determine annual assessments, the need for cash flow. We bring that to the county board for your approval. And we do pre-bill benefited landowners here in Meeker County to give them an opportunity to pay in advance of that, becoming part of their tax burden and also part of their escrow, if that's not what they would choose to have. We certify the drainage assessments for payment to the property tax statements if there is not pre-bill or they choose not to pre-bill or pay the pre-bill. We work very closely with the ditch inspectors, Mac and I have numerous conversations regarding repairs, scheduling meetings, and the taxpayer notices. We do basically the office work and Mac very definitely does all the legwork and a certain amount of office work as well. We coordinate the ditch splits to make sure that the correct taxpayer is receiving the billing on the benefited rolls, which is a fairly large task at times with different systems, especially the age on some of the redeterminations. And we answer landowner questions regarding their property. More definitely when they're selling property, that beautiful crick in the backyard probably is one of our county's systems. And so we try to be sure that we have people informed, and we work directly with realtors as well. Elections would be our next large area of work, especially coming off of the twenty twenty-four calendar year. And I laid out what is expected of the county, more specifically our office, in regards to a full year calendar. In twenty twenty-three, we began the nomination primary details along with education, taking our training and training our judges at the end of December, early January, as outlined in statute. In twenty twenty-four, there were three primary elections, primary being larger in nature, and then also the March Township falls in there. So beginning in January, the candidate filing happens for March Township. They file with each of their different townships, but the county is very heavily involved with equipment that is needed and also with ballot printing, which is all managed through the county. We began the absentee voting for the presidential nomination primary on January nineteenth. That election was March fifth, followed up the next week with the March Township election. So back to back, those two were large in our work environment. For the federal, state, and county offices, the candidate filing began in May for a two-week period of time. And we did not have more than three in any position, or that would have followed through with the August primary. Absentee voting for the August primary started on June twenty-eighth. The candidate filing for the other positions that appear on the ballot, city, the school board, and those four townships that have their elections in November, candidate filing ended on the primary day, but they also have the two-week period. The state primary was August thirteenth. September twentieth was the beginning of the voting period for the November election. And as we all know, November fifth was our general election. Looking at a schedule overall, for twenty twenty-three, we had the March Township, and we had two special school district elections, so it was a very light year in twenty-three. Twenty-four, as I said, three statewide. We were in absentee voting mode for thirty-seven point eight percent of the year, which is, when I told my staff that, it was like, wow, forty-six days for each one. And then, of course, we have the March Township. Excuse me, for twenty twenty-five, we anticipate just right now the March Township election, which in two weeks, we will be beginning that process. There are uniform election days, so there's not the opportunity to pick, like schools want to do a referendum or, as an example, in years past. Only days that can be chosen for elections are in November, April, May, August, and November. So it limits it to those five, with the addition of the townships, that would be a six, and then the presidential nomination primaries. So it gives the offices that conduct elections a little more uniformity when there is crossovers or city, and then also a school, which would cross over to some of the same voters.
Barb?
Yes.
If I may, then, on some of the townships, are they all in March, or did some go to?
Four, we have four that do November. So out of the seventeen, the others are all March.
Yep.
That's their only other choice, but we have four that have chosen to be in November.
Okay, I, I thought we had some.
And the townships themselves decide this?
Correct, they can make that decision.
Would it be more cost effective to have them all on one ballot instead of printing ballots in March and in November?
I always tell them that's their choice. We did have five townships, one backed down and chose not to have it. Part of the reason is if it's March, they have them every year, so their terms are up. One supervisor in one, two, three, where if they go on March, or they go on the November, we have two supervisors on one rotation and one on the other, along with the clerk and treasurer. So there's some of the townships thinking that they could have a clean house or could have a lot more turnover in their township and choosing not to. The other thing is, is those that do have November, we have a few people that say they would prefer March because that's when they meet with their township supervisors. They still need to have their meeting. So the pros and cons, from our office perspective, I don't like to see no candidate. And sometimes that can happen with the November, if they don't adhere to the filing period. And then it's a write-in, and that's a little more work on our office. So pros and cons, be totally neutral, I think it's definitely their personal choice and their supervisor's choice.
Thank you.
The leadership tasks with the election, we have general management, which generally is the task that I have taken, the ballot assembly, the ordering, trying to outguess how many people are gonna vote or not, and to have the correct supply, the candidate management, working with candidates from all levels so that they understand the timeframe. Some of our townships and cities aren't that attuned, their clerks aren't that tuned in to those two-week periods, so that's very critical to get that data out to them. We correspond heavily with the city and the school. Our office works with those clerks in many different facets, and elections is no different. We train election judges, it was about two hundred and fifty trained election judges for this two-year cycle. We take care of, from the leadership, the election team management. And that doesn't just mean our team in my office, that means those in each of those jurisdictions as well. We should, they're also appointing their judges and following through on the timeframe. So we work very heavily in team management. And then the election results and the campaigning is sort of the final wrap-up, which we just did this last week. From the statewide voter registration system, this is where all the registrations are throughout Minnesota. We do have to maintain the absentee voter, the mail voter, the permanent voter, it's a very heavy task at election time. We also have registration updates, these come in daily, weekly, and we have the requirement to process them electronically on a very timely basis. In the election year, we are on every day. In the non-election period, we sometimes can let things go for a few days, so we manage those weekly. We also process all the name, address change, depth notices, driver license updates. And again, that needs either be done weekly or daily, depending upon the election cycle. We have election equipment that we test to deploy, both for the March Township and also for the primary and the general. And the absentee ballot management is a large part of what we do. And that's why when I said thirty-seven percent of our twenty twenty-four was in absentee ballot management, that, that's a huge piece of getting the ballots mailed out, answering voter concerns regarding them or not receiving them, receiving them back, accepting them into the statewide system so they can track their ballot, and then also, I mean, I'm into the counting machine. With the equipment, most of you are aware of the equipment that we use. We have eighteen scanners, that's the ballot counting piece of equipment up in the upper left. We have the pull pad in a lot of our locations, not all of them. That is the electronic roster, which provides for much quicker, speedier process of accounting for the voters' registration and et cetera. The bottom left is the voter assist unit, and we did have a few people in the courthouse use that. We're always happy to direct people in that direction, it's a very useful tool, but it's not used enough. And on the right is the accumulation software, which is a simple computer that does not and cannot be connected to the internet in any way. So it accumulates all the data right from, the memory sticks into that process, and that's how we load it into the state. The general election in sixteen to twenty-four, I have a few stats, you can see how the trend is. In sixteen, we had twelve thousand three hundred. To go to the next presidential would be twenty twenty at thirteen five, and we had thirteen seven here in, the election just finished. Election day registrations, we had always thought that would become less and less with all the electronic ways and the tremendous amount of push registered. And as you see, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, that's not a typing year, it is one different. And people stay registered unless they move, change their name, or haven't voted in the last four years. So it was really interesting to see that number remain so high and almost identical. The absentee people, those are ones that specifically ask for their ballot. The total, when we compare twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, we had about a thousand less, which was probably understandable because twenty twenty was a real push with COVID. The male precincts, we had ten male precincts beginning in two thousand eighteen. There was a few, and more so in twenty twenty, where we have ten communities. And you'll see that those numbers of return are very similar. They choose to vote, they're sending them back. The percentage of people voting absentee or male, not on election day, was forty-six percent in twenty twenty, and in twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-eight percent. And if you were listening to the radio this morning, they announced the statewide number is seventy-six point thirty-five percent of our people voted. And in Meeker County, we had ninety point four percent of our seven AM registration vote. So very heavily interested in the voting procedures, making part in Meeker County.
And I was listening to the radio too this morning, Barb, and Minnesota, as of this morning, was still the number one state to have voter turnout, seventy-six.
That status two years ago to Wisconsin. And if it holds, and Wisconsin finishes their process, we will most likely exceed them in twenty twenty-four. We were number one in twenty twenty, and then twenty twenty-two was Wisconsin and twenty twenty-four.
What was the state, seventy-six?
Seventy-six point.
Seventy-six point thirty-five.
And Meeker County alone was this ninety point four.
Seven AM registrations voted. And those of you that came through the courthouse, especially in the last two or three weeks, probably shook your head to the chaos. We had one entrance and a lot of people, we at times would have thirty to thirty-five or forty people. The highest day, we had a hundred and sixty, some people come through that process. So hopefully, with our new location, that can be a little bit more streamlined. We had four full-time staff, we had five temps that worked full-time the last three weeks. And we also had six extra helpers on the election day or election evening. So it was a team of about fifteen of us that took care of the election process in the last day. In-person voting, we were given mandates by legislation for some hours that have to be for absentee. So we were there all day on Saturday, I didn't know what to expect, but was very surprised both Saturday, both Saturdays and Sunday, at the amount of people that took advantage and came on those days. We had upwards of a hundred and twenty-five to thirty people a day. We also had to stay till seven P M. on Tuesday, and that was not very well-known or very well-received. So we did not see a lot of extra people till seven P M. that day. We transmitted six thousand sixty-eight ballots, that was the absentee and mail. We had fifty-two hundred of those come back. So seven hundred and ninety-three were not returned. And of those, the stat that people look for is how to mail people or mail ballot people respond. Six hundred and twelve of the seven ninety-three are theirs. We do have probably two dozen that have come in to our office that were mailed late at this point. And a hundred and eighty-one of the people that requested the ballot also did not return their ballot. Several of them do the most convenient option, request the ballot, but then go vote in person. And so of the one eighty-one, it's hard to tell how many likely did that. In the last five days in the courthouse, we had eight hundred and sixty-five people come through. So if you want to divide that out, just to vote, to vote absentee or did not keep or wanted us to spoil their mail ballot and wanted to vote in person in the building. So we also, at that time, spoiled a hundred and seventy-three ballots. By spoiling, that means we have record that we sent it. We need to go into the system and negate that, saying it's lost or unknown location, that they have not returned it, and then turn around and issue them another ballot. And so those were primarily our mail voter people who misplaced it, didn't understand the system, or chose to not like the system. We sort of have the saying that we didn't realize how many times the dog ate homework any longer. And I even had one individual tell me they used the ballot as kitty litter, so there you go.
Oh, boy.
Replacements transmitted, it was a hundred and sixty-five. That means that they either did not fill it out completely correct or some other reason that we had to transmit a replacement to the board.
Barb? If I may, on, on, like, if you, just clarification, because I know I gotta ask this question too. If someone, if they voted absentee, came in courthouse, put it in the box, and will they find out if that ballot is spoiled?
The only ones that we have to inform of a spoiled or ballot not accepted was up to the last four or five. was up to the last four or five days. We have made every attempt we could that the ballot board was not going to accept that or if we received late mail. So we do need to let them know that we received their ballot late if they were an absentee voter. If they're in a mail ballot precinct, we do not have to do that. However, all the voters can follow their own ballot as to the destination and what happened by going on to the government site, MNvotes.gov. You type in your name and on the bottom, it will tell you whether your ballot was honestly accepted or whether it was not accepted. And that individual can call our office to say what was the destination, what was wrong? Why did my ballot not get accepted?
And have the opportunity, and that was the thing. So they have the opportunity to come in and correct if there was a problem for some reason. They have that opportunity to come in.
So we were making a lot of phone calls in the last few days. It was somewhat disheartening in some situations, but I kept on telling staff there's a small percentage of what we're looking at where people would return that envelope with those blanks more than once. And we sent another letter, highlighted what they had done. And it would come back not voter signed or would come back not witnessed. And that's disappointing because then call us. Our phone number is on everything. And some do, they call and I don't understand. I, you know, I thought I did it correctly. I mean, when I go to the polls, I only have to sign. But when you're not going to the polls, you are witnessing them standing in front of them. They do need to have a witness. And that's what people don't understand.
Do, is that website still up? Can you check today? And audit, give me that.
Go on to MinnesotaVotes.gov or go on to our county website under the auditor and go through the steps to do elections. We have the election results.
Okay.
Connection to the Ontario State. Make sure that you go along with the bottom because at different intervals of time, they're looking toward the next elections that would be coming in. So way on the bottom in red, it will tell you. And we have somebody, we worked with it yesterday, so I know it's still up and running.
Okay.
But it's a nice tool for our people to look at. One of the things with the tool is you need to be very specific. If you apply for your ballot with your first, middle and last name and you used your identification to be your driver's license or your social security, you need to use the same data. So you need to know that it's you and your data that you're finding the, tracking your ballot. And sometimes people, like me, I would use Barbara, Barbara. It's got to be a specific. Or like in my case too, I have two last names. I don't hyphenate them. So some of the things that people don't, aren't specific on, that then they say the tool doesn't work. The tool doesn't work. They have to be very, very careful and very specific. So after the election, we have a post-election review. This had to happen in Minnesota for all of our communities ending last week. And we did two jurisdictions which are chosen by the campus board. They chose for us to do Union Grove and Manana. They're not by any means our largest, certainly not our smallest. And the equipment was 100% correct. What the equipment was designed to read was exactly what the equipment read. And throughout the state, that is known to be 99.9%. We had to look at three different contests. We had to look at the president, the senator and the representative. In off-years, it would be the governor in that combination and actually physically count every ballot for every candidate to be sure that the equipment saw what the equipment was designed to see and there was no misinformation between the two. Moving on to alphabetical, gravel tax. We have a collection period that goes from February to the end of January. So to date, we've received $38,000 in collections. I did not do the tons and yardage yet. But as you see, two previous years, we have 14 or 15 that are in use. Submitters, we receive this information quarterly. And as the board directed our office to be a little bit more diligent on those that aren't submitting, I've made that effort, although some of them I think are going to do it once a year. That's their pattern, that's what they'll, that's what they'll do. You see the yards are similar, somewhat different, and the dollar amount has decreased. So even if in the last quarter, we receive a significant amount, I think we will be down in gravel for 2024. We do the licenses. The first one, the auctioneer, we have about seven in our community. They have to reside in Meker County to be licensed in Meker County. The fireworks, we usually do one or two. Dassel event always comes in with one, there's usually one other one. We have 19 establishments countywide, but do not license the city of Litchfield. So they do their own. We have transit merchant, the most recent one that's always coming is the fireworks sales. It's at the parking lot at Walmart right over the Fourth of July. In conjunction with your approval and the Department of Alcohol Gambling, we have three full-time liquor establishments. Banana, Hilltop, Peters of Litchfield and Cheggies, which is south of 22. We have one consumption and display. Some people call that setup so they can still bring their liquor in and receive the mix at the tavern. We have strong beer and wine. It's our two wineries, Milner's and Jomis. We have club licenses, which has helped with the 3-2 issue. So the 3-2 is pretty nonexistent in the flavor of most people's desire. And Darwin and Cedar Mills Gun Clubs have club licenses, which they're finding to be very useful. And then we have the one-to-four day temporary, which again, has to come through. And those clubs also are using the one-to-four day temp when they have outside events such as their pork chop feed.
And these are all, excuse me, these are all annual?
These are all annual. And they have different expiration times. Tobacco is February to January. The full liquor establishments are July 1st to June 30th. Consumption is based on their timing. Strong beer and wine is also based on the timing of their request.
Okay, thank you.
We move into doing passports. And with passports, the first time passports, we have seen an increase in '23. I'm not sure where '24 is going to end up because we did have to not take appointments for the period that we were doing the elections. That county was always so big. And so we just plain dropped off for a few days and said, you know, we can't. We, the few people really were important and their timing was critical, but we did drop off. So I don't know where '24 is going to end up due to that. But we do first time, six, eight, 10 a week. We take photos for both the renewal and the new. So we're estimating that we're about 11 per week right now. Renewals do not have to come to the county for assistance. They can go online, get their form, fill it out. But we do have a lot of people that come in primarily to get the photo and to have assistance. They just want help getting that more difficult form completed and to be sure that they've done it right. All of the agents need to be trained annually and we have to be certified annually to be a passport agent office.
Barb, question. I mean, is getting a passport still a thing? Because now you can use an enhanced license?
We find that there's an awful lot of renewals and I'm not positive how the enhanced does with regards to flying over to overseas. I believe it'd still be the passport for that. You can use the enhanced for driving.
Canada and Mexico are the only two that the enhanced is good for.
And enhanced is, and enhanced is difficult to get depending. For women who have been widows or, it's really a hassle. The guys, of course, know, but the name change is a pain. I'm just saying, Phil, why are you laughing back?
Yeah.
And some people are challenged even to get the passport. You know, sometimes they have data that they need primarily, you know, their original birth certificate. They weren't born in this area. You know, you think you'd need it for many things, but either it's been misplaced or they come in and, oh my goodness, how, but, and then also families that are separated.
I went down to get an enhanced and she said, you really don't want to let this man get a passport. I said, good idea.
Really?
So anyway, passports are pretty busy. And we do take appointments. The appointments are done at 2:00 or 2:30 because we have to hand carry that envelope to the post office and give it to the post office. We are not allowed to put that in a delivery or hand it off to someone who isn't an agent. Moving on to recorder of deeds. So this is my R in our, in our office. We are the caretaker of all the records of the county pertaining to land titles, transfers. Those documents vary between deeds, mortgages, bankruptcies, mechanic liens, probate papers. There is in excess of 200 different types of documents that come through, so not so often. We have the track index that gives the history back to the 1800s. That index is used as a means for people to get to the document that they want to look up if they're doing this independently on their own, which we offer that through our website. Laredo and those that are occasional users will use Tapestry for an online tool. And they again can view the image, but there are fees that apply. Someone who does not want to incur any fees will come to the public terminal in the recorder's office at no charge. And sometimes they'll come there just because they aren't savvy in all the different ways to look up their property. The track books through 2016 are also online for public use. And Meker County Plats are available online. And that's one of the other ones that we have people ask for. We also are the recorder and retain for the armed forces, their discharge papers. So the DD214s are housed in our office as well. Moving on to the recording department, the amount of documents recorded, and this always goes with the industry and what's happening with mortgage rates and et cetera. So there was 6,000 in '21, 4,400 in '22 and 36 in '23. And to date, we've had 3,300. Over to the right, the vendor that we work with has a nice little volume document statistic chart. 57% of our documents are e-recorded, which the 21% was the lower of '22 to '23. The Tapestry searches, those are the people that do the one time or more than one time but choose to pay per search was down as well between '21 or '22 and '23. And I do not have '24 to date. The Laredo prescriptions, these are realtors or title companies that purchase blocks of time on a contract with the county. And we have 24 of those currently. And they renew, many of them renew annually. There's a few that will do a block of time based on their project. Excel Energy right now is a block of time as an example. The document types, 60% of the recorded documents are these top five out of the 200 that come through, transfer on death. With transfer on death deeds, those need to be done immediately. If they come in, they need to be taken out of the sequence and done that day or that hour, as some attorneys tell us, because it's very, very important to have that recorded before a death occurs. Quick claim, warranty deed, satisfaction and release of mortgage. And then also mortgage are the top five documents that come through our office. And they, like I said, are 60% of the documents. There's also the opportunity for people to enroll in a property fraud alert in Minnesota along with the counties in Green. And we are one of those counties that takes part in that. And what you do is you subscribe. You subscribe, we have 149 subscribers. And here to date, they receive 12 alerts. And we had 12 new subscribers. And they receive their alerts based on the way they wish to receive it. Do they want to have it by phone, text or email? So if something is recorded touching a property that they have in the enrollment of the fraud alert, they would get a notice. So they would also get notices if we were to put like a lien on certain ditch areas. And they'd say, wait a minute, what's happening to my property? So they get an alert whenever something is flagged onto their particular property that they put in what they subscribe to want to be alerted for. Property records, this is the maintenance of our parcels. Meker County has approximately 18,500 parcels. And our office is tasked with reviewing the recorded documents that will affect a property record in terms of the ownership or a change of address. We don't deal with mortgages, so that's why we say review of transfer documents and the e-record, the accepting. So all of these documents that come through that are in value of 5,000 or more need to have an ECRV or is it 3,000 or more? Need to have an ECRV attached and we review those processes. That electronic certificate of real estate value then goes to the assessor and they do their part. And it also uploads to the state. So this is a big part of, we have a little part of that big picture. Address changes, ownership changes, legal description updates. Sometimes people have a survey, their property legal changes. We had one yesterday that wants to divide a lot into three parcels. So that would be a survey split. Plats, annexations, vacations, those all come through our office. We split and combine parcels. To date, we have done 103 and that's very, that's pretty much on the par. We do 100 to 125 parcel splits or combining, whichever way the landowner needs to have it done. And we coordinate with the public, other departments and agencies and to maintain these records. So we are always working with realtors, working with title companies, working with individuals that want to do it themselves in terms of recording and getting documents through. So a lot of customer service comes out of that service. The taxing authorities that the county works with are the state, county, city, school, township, watersheds and special districts. So all of these will be providing levies into the county's greater picture to produce the final property tax statement. These levies are due both in the preliminary, just like the counties, also in a final. So townships start out early, they have on this schedule. So the township will set their levy in March of '23 or did. The schools, county and others will finalize theirs at the end of December. We calculate the tax statement, they go out in March. There's three primary collection dates, May, October and November. And then in January, that levy is decided to be completely collected. Then we determine what's unpaid or what's stolen. It's a big picture of how the townships are starting very early to the final in terms of the tax line. The tax information reporting, we begin with a levy survey. So all of the different levies that come in, with the school, township, county, we need to report that to the Department of Revenue. Then we come to February where we have to report all the underlying debt. And that's for the county, any school or any city or township that has underlying debt that the same taxpayers would be paying. So our office is charged with accumulating that and reporting that to the Department of Revenue February 1st. Then we have the April 1st deadline for PRISM. And PRISM is a product of the Department of Revenue that both the assessor and the auditor work with. It is where all of our taxing data values and et cetera goes into a prescribed upload. And the assessor does the upload of values in April. The auditor does the upload of the tax statements in April. So that's the opposite years, it's back to back years. And then we also have another PRISM abstract due in September for both the auditor and the assessor. So PRISM is a large piece. It's the property records information system of Minnesota. And this is where your property tax refunds are calculated. They, it's just a big collection of data in terms of the property records. We have the school abatement report, which is due in July. So anytime we adjust tax statements in any way, the school is very specific to know the dollars, very specifically that they are not going to be receiving both for the abatement and for the delinquent tax. And then the following is a lot of annual reports that are a duplicate of the ones I just discussed. So the distribution of levy funds, this is happening based on the collections of May, October, November and the final in December. And then also the payment in lieu, which is done late in the year, working on that right now. So all of those tax payments that are collected within the year will be settled to all of those entities that you saw depending upon the parcel and who receives certain dollars because payment in lieu doesn't necessarily go across all those entities. Then the distribution of revenue is done both from the real estate, mobile home, the delinquent tax, and that's both mobile home and real estate. We have wind energy, mineral interest transmission lines, and we have the special assessments. So notably, the ditch comes in special assessments. And then the final slide here is the tax. And then the final slide here is the tax audit that happens. So the state general tax audit is a large one, making sure that the levy set by the state, the collections, the payments to the state and what is left over for their budgeting purposes. The county financial, we help with the taxes collected and the taxes unpaid for the county's financial statement. Cities are also heavily involved with their auditors at different times of the year. They need to have their certain assessments, the taxes collected and also what's unpaid, what's unreported or what's delinquent and the years of delinquency so they can finish their budgets and finish their financial. We do the ditch accounts, analysis for unpaid and taking out loans. We have the delinquent taxpayer notices that are sent in March. And many of you are aware that the forfeit and the delinquent notices for twenty twenty-four were greatly altered based on the new standards for taking of property. Then we'll be rolling into the forfeit process. So I did not forfeit any property in twenty twenty-four nor that we have any sale of property in twenty twenty-four based on all of the different lots that were coming through and changes. We do have one piece of property in inventory here in the city of Litchfield in our forfeit. And are there any questions?
What else have you been doing this year?
Definitely put a lot of time into.
With your other sixty-two percent of time other than elections.
Well, my husband says he wants his wife back, so that's probably the answer. Not only do I think about her when I'm at work, but I, I just have a mind that wants to be planning and it does take a lot of work. Grateful for my employment, but basically it's, there's a lot of work to it.
Well, I know I helped on election day a little bit and it was.
Pretty chaotic.
It's robust, busy and.
It was chaotic, organized, chaotic, organized mess, I think. Andrew also alluded to that too, that we kept moving.
Legislatively, I think it'd be nice if they cut that window down, September twentieth. I mean, that drags on your staff. That's a long.
It's ridiculous.
It is not the same across the nation.
Good job on that part.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
All right.
Organized chaos.
No more questions, all right. Thanks, Barb. Moving on, Andrew.
Yes.
Setting the county board commissioners meeting schedule.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So this is an, obviously an annual process that you do. Kind of looking at the schedule for next year, there was just two things I wanted to highlight before we brought it to you for a vote. The first is scheduling of the truth and taxation hearing or the budget and levy public hearing. We have scheduled for December first at six P M., which is a Monday. And then the next board meeting would be the next morning when you could potentially adopt the budget or move it from there. We've moved this one around a little bit over the years. This year it's on a Thursday. It's historically kind of been on a Thursday. But with the timing of Thanksgiving and different things, there's, that's why we're looking to schedule this on this Monday here. So there was, so kind of looking for concurrence that that's okay and that's something you'd want to do. The second is I've heard over the past year, desire to consider doing evening board meetings, particularly on the days when we're already here for other evening meetings. And those two are June seventeenth, when we have the board of review meeting and then the budget and levy public hearing. You know, those are the two nights that we already have evening meetings. And so the idea would be you have a county board meeting that starts earlier and then rolls directly into that meeting. So those are just two items for discussion for you to consider. Otherwise, I would propose that the proposed schedule be approved as drafted.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
This year's budget levy is the fifth, Thursday the.
Yes, that's correct.
Because we must have adjusted our schedule because we were thinking AMC last year, right? Is usually that first week or did we?
So, so yes, typically the AMC conference starts the Sunday after Thanksgiving weekend. And so the last couple of years that has fallen into the first week of December. This year it falls the second week of December, next year falls the second week of December. And so that kind of adjusts when we can do some of those meetings. But yeah, a lot of times we've had that meeting, that first meeting in December on Thursday morning. We have that last couple, a couple of years. And then, you know, last year, for example, we had the truth and taxation hearing, I believe on November thirtieth. My goal is typically to have it as early as we can while still giving adequate time for people to receive their notices so that we have plenty of time in the event that something comes up through that hearing where we want to amend the budget. We have plenty of time before the end of the year and don't have to schedule a special meeting just to approve the budget.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Is it something, having a couple of evening, evening meetings a year, would that be, I think, interest to the general public?
What was that?
If we had a couple of meetings, you know, like the board of review, we could start our, our particular board meeting at four-thirty. And if we weren't done, we would just simply recess, do the board review and wrap up afterwards. You wouldn't be making two trips to town.
I, I know that I hear from some of my constituents that it's a very difficult meeting to get to if they work because of the time of day. So I always thought it would be all right to do an evening meeting once or twice a year. Just because, and I realize that's harder for the staff, but it's hard for our people too. So that's why I always thought it was maybe a good idea.
No, I, I don't, I don't see why a couple of meetings a year when we're already here in the evening. I, I mean, it's.
I think it's.
I'd assume you'd kind of make it a little light on the staff in any way, those meetings do.
Well, we, we schedule things onto the agenda when they come up.
Right.
So we're, we're not always looking at things and saying, oh, this would fit better on this date versus this date. It's when issues arise is when we schedule them on the agenda, when contracts are ready, all that sorts of stuff.
No, yeah, but like you could suspend maybe the review for that evening to save that kind of stuff. Otherwise, I wouldn't have a.
And we could always conduct business where they're needed at the front part of the agenda. So we'd have some adjustment.
So do you have dates in mind or have you got it in the schedule already?
You, you already mentioned them.
We have, we have two meetings that already occur in the evening and so those would be two dates that you could.
So they are the first.
So the, so what I would suggest then is if that's the direction you're going to go, that we schedule the budget and levy public hearing on December second. We schedule that on December second and then we schedule the county board meeting to begin at four-thirty on that day. And then the same thing on the seventeenth, we schedule to begin at four-thirty.
So the seventeenth, yeah.
Would be a summer one and a winter one, June and December.
I would be fine with that if everything else.
Yeah, I think that's worthy of a try, see what happens.
Thinking, I'm thinking it won't make a difference, but at least I could say we tried it at the time.
Well, is there any, I mean, do you see any issues as far as county organizationally?
It's, it's availability of department heads and the fact that, you know, those folks will accrue some comp time, but that's, you know, not the end of the world.
Oh, county attorney is tripping in my ear.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five board of commissioners meeting scheduled as presented.
As presented or as?
Oh, as amended.
I don't have the evening.
Devils in the detail.
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion on the table to approve the schedule. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Watch, I'll be gone now. I have a feeling.
Happy you'll be here.
Administrators report.
Yes, I have a brief report for you.
Brief would be nice.
Be nice.
First off, we had Senator Lang come and meet with us last meeting. You know, one of the things that many other counties across the state do is they host meetings with local legislators ahead of the legislative session, talk about what those legislators expect to see at the Capitol and talk about some of the priorities that the county has. We have not historically done that, at least since I've been here. So I'm curious if that's something that our board would be interested in doing. And if so, would you like to be a meeting with the full board? Would you like to be a meeting with just the board chair and the vice chair potentially? And so kind of looking for some guidance on that and then we can work to do it.
So I recall, I think going over to McLeod, they had one, invited some of us. Do you recall that?
Once, for sure.
I would think it would be nice for the board to meet with them.
Sure.
That would be my opinion.
Well, the one thing we found in, in you guys is when we go up there in February, they are so busy. It's like they're working us in.
Yeah.
You know, and then you're maybe in there with another county.
But they would come here, right?
That's what we would look to do is schedule a date and invite all six of our representatives and senators to come and meet. And we could do it as a special meeting, a special work session. I would suggest doing it in December before the legislative session starts. And then also do it a, after the AMC platform and priorities have been established so that we can share that information plus any other priorities that you all feel is important.
And it, it was much easier when we had one representative and one senator and now we have three of each.
Exactly.
So I mean.
It's a whole new ballgame.
Probably not going to get six in one room.
I, I am certain that we won't, but my, my thought is we will pick a date, we will invite them and we will get who we get.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we will work on doing that then, so.
All right.
Two other things, we are having a work session next week. And before that, there's a J D seventeen meeting that's scheduled for eight in the morning. So for those of you who are on J D seventeen, except for Danny, please be here at eight o'clock. And then the last piece is looking to get my evaluation scheduled for the last meeting in December, December seventeenth, so that those of you who are not here have an opportunity to tell me how great or terrible I am.
Can't we just do that now?
And so I'll be sending out the, the same questionnaire that we've used and get feedback from department heads and provide that to you. But something to look forward to and plan on. So that concludes my report.
If, if I may, Mr. Andrew, I know that you've been busy with this remodel, but I walked through downstairs today. That is absolutely fantastic.
In the annex? Yeah, it's coming together very nicely.
I just, I was just, I saw the blueprint.
Yeah.
But you know, blueprint and then when you see the actual, it, it just looks so professional and so nice.
It looks really good.
And I know you had lots to do with that, so thank you.
Will we have a tour before the end of the year or?
Once we get furniture installed and some more of the construction work completed, we'll, we'll absolutely make a trip down there, potentially as early as next week, otherwise we can do it in December.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I was through it through a couple of times when I was in here for budget.
It's, it's coming together nice, I think it's.
The security is what's, you know, what we had before, the open big, now you've got a far more secure situation.
For elections too, I think it's going to be, that's where I see the biggest.
Fun balance, do we have any money?
We do have money.
I just get a report on that all the time.
It's in the packet.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
All right, thank you, Andrew. And with the spirit of how long everything lasted, I would be in the motion to just forget the commissioner reports for this week.
That's fine for, I don't worry much.
If you want to say something, you can go ahead and say.
I just want to thank Beth and Andrew and Brandy because I am now the chair of the Southwest eighteen.
Oh.
Yay.
Yay, Paul.
All right.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And I would just want to thank Paul because I'm not the chair of PAC four, but I did go with Paul to PAC four on the sixth and then took on and preliminary the audit and the budget for PAC four as he was gone on the thirteenth, so then I attended that. And the only other thing, other than E D A and negotiations, which I think are moving along well, I just, I made an announcement this past week or so that I will be running for the Secretary of Treasury position of AMC at the business meeting on December eleventh.
So if you only want to go to AMC for one day, register and just come that day so we have votes because.
Which, which day did that again?
Wednesday, the eleventh.
The eleventh of December.
Yep, Wednesday morning.
And you have a lot of competition.
Why are you looking at me?
Four.
That I know of.
I think Peters.
All right, hopefully everybody writes that date down. That would be important and nice to have Steve in at, at office. So with that said, meeting adjourned.
I was surprised with.
Okay.